Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting for the City of San Juan at 6:00 PM. May we rise for our nation, Mr. Juan?
As we gather here today, we thank you for your blessing and your blessing upon us. As we start tonight's meeting, we ask for your guidance and wisdom as elected officials make important decisions that will benefit our city. We place our words in your hands. We pray in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Black. For that, you do.
The United States of America, interior public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you. Make me see it.
Mr. Juan. Mayor Comisioners, good evening, staff. Under first item on the agenda, we have presentations. We have presentation of 2024 TAF Platinum Member City Award. Good evening, Mayor Gansa, Mayor Porcian, Vélez, Commissioners.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Juan, Mr. Palacios, thank you for allowing me here this afternoon. I'm here to basically acknowledge and present our staff, our departments. You know, on September 16th through the 19th of this year, our Parks and Recreation Administrative Staff, Employees, Mr. Ramiro Moreno, Mr. Alex López, and Ms. Christine Soto. They attended the 99th Annual TAF Conference that was held in Garden, Texas. This was a three-day conference that included over 140 organizations throughout the state of Texas. They attended that conference. And the purpose of the Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, TAF, is to promote, organize, and conduct amateur athletics in the state of Texas. So they're kind of a government body that oversees a large portion of the state in regards to athletics. This year, the San Juan Parks and Recreation Department serviced over 1,800 participants within our city, our programs, 128 teams in our sports leagues, and our programs throughout the 2023-2024 fiscal year. And please note, those numbers do not incorporate our participation in our summer pony leagues. Only these other sports, we do report and register through the TAF. So again, we are represented well in our city. Due to this accomplishment, I'm proud to announce that, once again, the San Juan Parks and Recreation Department was recognized by the TAF Association at this year's conference with the 2023-2024 TAF Platinum Member City Award. Okay, in recognition of the department's outstanding registration, registration of teams, registration of individuals, and TAF training programs that are held throughout the year. And I'm proud to announce once again that this is our third consecutive year that we have received this award. I'm very excited, I'm very happy, and I'm very proud of my staff for not only representing the city well upstate, but just coordinating our yearly programs and, again, representing the Valley Number One, but our numbers are holding up statewide in regards to participation. You know, and, you know, so again, I'd like to show you all the award that we did receive this year. And I'll just read a little bit off their word. It says, you know, presented to the City of San Juan Parks and Recreation Department for outstanding 2023-24 registration support for teams, individuals, and TAF training programs, September 18th, 2024.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. You know, we're, again, we're very proud to receive this award. You know, there's more to come. Again, this cannot be done without our entire staff, our department, especially our administrative staff. So at this time, I'd like to acknowledge and just kind of present them as well. With us today, we have our Parks and Recreation Assistant Director, Mr. Ramiro Moreno, our Administrative Assistant, I'm sorry. Oh, our Administrative Assistant is Angie Cono is not available today. She had a previous engagement. Our Recreational Supervisor, Mr. Alex López, and our Recreation Assistant, Ms. Christine Soto. And even as, as usual, this cannot be done, not even just administrative, it's our entire department. So, you know, I hate to miss them, but I can include other aspects of our department as well. I'd like to acknowledge our Parks and Recreation Superintendent, Mr. Nick Salazar, and of course, his staff. You know, what they do is they maintain our landscaping of all the parks and prepare for all our tournaments and league nights. Our Building Maintenance Supervisor, which is Mr. Ruben Martinez, and his staff, and they, you know, building maintenance is the upkeep of the facilities, the repairs of all parks, the cleaning of all parks, restrooms, stuff like that. So they keep things nice and tidy for us. And last but not least, you know, they're kind of like the unsung heroes. I'd like to acknowledge our site supervisors and our recreational assistants. And those are the younger employees that we have in the afternoons. They're part-timers per se. A lot of them are high schoolers, current high school. A lot of them are college students, working part-time, but they assume the responsibilities after hours as well. You know, to tell you the, I have one specific thing to do, no, I mean, a lot of them coach, a lot of them go out and prepare our fields for games, site supervisors, make sure things going good there at different locations. And again, due to the participation numbers, we're booked solid. We have games every night currently. You see them everywhere, like football, we're using all the, a majority of the gyms for our volleyball, you know, games, and our baseball fields for high school and baseball leagues. So, you know, again, I'm proud of my staff. And again, I'd like to thank all you all for always backing us up and helping us with whatever we need. We're proud of what we're doing and we're proud of representing San Juan well. So we appreciate the time.
Good job. Sure. Yeah, let's take a picture.
Mayor Comisioners, we have, next item is presentation on departmental reports. Tonight, we have Department of Planning and zoning, Parks and Recreation, sanitation. So one more, library, finance, fire department, police department, municipal court, and property utilities. Every department director is here. If you have any questions for them.
This time, is there any questions for the directors?
Yes.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I've been given a lot of complaints, I'm not sure we directed to, regarding food trucks that are popping up at night on the weekends. Partly the residents, you know, they complain they have to pay $15 for a garage sale. They pop in, they don't have a permit, they get shut down. I know I brought this up before regarding the food trucks because people assume they've gone through the, you know, followed the steps to make sure they're safe for the people, as well as also paid the permit fees for them to operate in the city. So I don't know if y'all have come up with a solution from the last time you brought this up, or if y'all are still working on a solution, but I know it does need to be addressed, please. So I don't know if y'all have a response for, are you also looking for a solution to, to address it?
I know that in the past, Commissioner, we had some people working over the weekends, and they were doing that. It's just that the people that work in the weekends, obviously, doesn't work every single weekend because of the amount of hours they work. But we can, we can definitely do something about that as far as maybe working on the weekends and maybe fix their schedule as well.
I know it's a little difficult because some of these are popping up really late at night, you know, 9:00, 10 o'clock, but we just need to do something because we need to make sure it's not only about getting the permits, but the people that are purchasing the food here think, you know, they're safe, and we just need to ensure from our end that they are following code for the safety of the food preparation and for those that are purchasing food. Thank you.
Mayor, my man.
Go ahead, sir.
I received a call regarding the security, Mr. Juan, at City Hall. I know that when we looked at the budget, I saw that Parks and Rec has security for their games. But as far as the security part that's there, what funding are we using for that? Is it outsourced, or is it a city employee or how?
No, it's an outsourced.
Outsourced?
Yes.
Okay, and how much, how much shall we pay?
I'm with the month with me, but it's not, it doesn't over the $50,000. It goes about maybe $30,000 a year, maybe less than that.
So it was a decision made human?
It was a decision made with the Commission prior coming over to the City Hall.
If you didn't give me that information, then I can share it with the partner. Any questions for the planning and zoning? What's the status on the director for that?
That one I'm still looking for. I'm gonna have to open it up again. We had a couple of applicants that came over and interviewed. Out of the five that we selected, only two showed up. We felt that maybe we need to open it up again, so that's what we're gonna be working on.
If it opened up again, how much time are you gonna give it?
At least maybe 10 days or leave it open until field.
It's been.
It's been a while, sir.
How about for a couple of months already?
Yes, sir.
As far as the library, status of that director for the library?
The same with that one. What we wanted to do was obviously give our staff an opportunity, so we wanted to keep her there. We looked at some of the applicants, obviously, I felt, we felt that it's better just to give the person an opportunity to maybe be the interim for now, and then maybe push her over to as a director. But one of the things the plan is, maybe the next couple of weeks, bring it before you guys and make the recommendation at that.
So is that position open right now?
It's already been closed.
It's been closed? It was, okay. So you guys went through the whole interview process and stuff?
Well, we haven't done the interviews on the libraries because we felt that they were not really qualified.
Okay, so there's possibility that we can open it up?
We can open it up again, maybe another 10 days.
Okay.
The status on the doors for the fire departments?
Those, as a matter of fact, they just installed one chief.
Correct. They got here this morning. They're looking into, they asked for a week and a half more to install.
To install?
Yes, sir.
I saw them working on it earlier today.
Chief Zifuentes, I know you mentioned your report about promotional videos. How is that going?
We're working with actually, actually, we're working on one for recruitment and one for promotional video.
Do you know, you have an idea of when you put them out?
Yeah, we already filmed the, one of the recruitment videos. We're hoping to have that out within two weeks. Just we're kind of, we're kind of a backlog with the, it's coming up, probably the rest of the, the end of the month goes back, so. We already had Eric, we already got all the footage and voice work done. We pretty much have the video set to be edited and wrapped.
Thank you, sir. Chief, we're Christian. I know that this coming Saturday is, what's it, drug-free with the PSA ISD, right? Are you guys participating here? I know this year it's an hour. Now, do we have a float for the Commission or whoever's gonna participate in this?
Yes, that's my understanding is that that's what they're working on.
They're working on one right now?
I'm not quite able to, Mayor, with the reference to that.
Mr. Juan?
Yes, actually, we are preparing a float for this Saturday. Saturday event, I did forward the information and the invitation to Ms. Brenda, so she can forward it to you guys. It would be this Saturday at Higuita Memorial High School. And included in that package, the layout, the map, course, and the official flyer. Okay, so yes, we are currently preparing a float for this Saturday.
Okay, and it's just one, right? One float?
Just one float.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
No problem.
Next week, we have the Higuita Homecoming. We're preparing two.
Yeah.
For one for.
PDC and the city, right? For next week, is that?
For next week, yeah. We're preparing the region for this Saturday, and probably only one for next week, because it's so close together, the event. We have two.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions?
Yes, everyone.
Go ahead, sir.
The status on Lucky Drive, Mr. Juan, I know that we brought it up to one of the meetings. Could you come up with any ideas that I would help?
So, so we did meet with staff. I know that I spoke to Mr. Garza, and for them to get together with the people at Lucky Drive. I know that currently what they're working on is they're working with engineers so that they can come up with a plan as to what the width of the street is gonna be. I don't know, we maybe come up with a workshop on that as to when we're gonna do that.
We, I talked to, actually, I mean, you know, about sure. He's working with, I'm not exactly, I'll go on phone, what we're trying to, layout, asking for a roof now. I would look, have to take the survey and the company, what they match, the boundaries, the activity, by the city, the people that do night work. So we tripled the layouts, we obviously see and they can see. And then that's the first, second, we have the, then, uh, it's that, AC or hybrid, those are the changes.
Do we have a timeline that's, by going for a meeting?
Well, when I talk to him, you know what, what he said would get to it?
I know, I know. Ronnie, and he's working on the design, getting the, the basement for the irrigation district from North Alamos. And they could all do the point of the, of the property.
And that's seven problems, nine problems. That's what you have to cost the money, is irrigation has a line. Then either needs to be a rewire, or redesign, or re-buy, buy rights on it, why the other? That's what you say, and then you're, I think one of the, so can you, I'll talk to him tomorrow, I'll give you.
Please.
I'll be sure, honestly, he can give you whatever, I'll give it.
That's good. Now, the other one is South Nebraska. I don't remember the subdivision.
The one in, that's the Trump Street.
Yes, that one? Yes.
That little piece, we're gonna do.
What's the status there?
So what we're gonna do on that one is get a price proposal, remove the concrete.
We haven't done it yet?
No.
Because I'm not thinking about a month since we discussed. If you can look.
Follow up on that.
And then Cemetery Road, I know we discussed also, if there were gonna be options to play getting in there?
Cemetery Road has been a mess of every true.
Right, you're trying to kind of look into an alternative route, get in.
I want to have a view into that, totally, but I have this room that we got shut down by irrigation, it's completely. They just keep reselling. And right now, they keep in tabs on that because he took it up too well, in that whole county. What's the, whatever, was it, the border, the irrigation district, because that's not the highway, it's a border. We're pretty much covered ourselves. And that's your east, that's what it is in east.
So I think in reference to that is that the problem there is that they're concerned, the poor irrigation district, they're concerned that the, they're worried that the canal might, yeah. So, so I know Mr. Garza's been reaching out to Mr. Roy Garcia. I even think the Judge Cortez is involved as well. Because, I mean, obviously, we all know that that is bad and, you know, doesn't belong to the city, right? So, so I know these guys still haven't given up. I know Roy Garcia from Pre-City Two hasn't given up, so they're still going at it. Last I spoke with Mr. Garcia.
And keep in mind that the irrigation district, the manager's charge at this point, they say, we all wanna do, you all wanna do, that's up to you. But we're not putting any money, I'm not giving you permission, you can do it on your own. So all we're asking is give me permission so I can do it, but they won't give me that. I can do it, we give, he told me he can do it, but I don't give you permission.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of good.
We can't.
So we can't.
Go to us there, the road right there.
You gotta have something in mind.
He hasn't wanted to do that, he's right there. That road will be having the discussions.
So how were they able to fix part of the street on Wyoming, 12th and Wyoming? They drew that tuck-in on it.
They didn't, no.
The, irrigation or with the, with the people that live through there?
The people that live on that neighborhood, they don't know. We haven't touched that street.
No, 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 I mean, they were able to do that, is there any way we?
I mean, as citizens, if you buy a load of dry mix or old mix or hot mix, that doesn't mean it becomes a street.
No, well, yeah, of course, but at the same thing, it doesn't become a street, well, that would be lost.
Just a fiber road.
Yeah. And on the streets, the streets, I know that that's meeting, South Tanca was mentioned. And, and as far as the asphalt already being made, but there's a section that hasn't been completed, what's the status? Why haven't we finished that?
Which section is that?
I think it's the north side of that.
The crossing?
That crossing, yeah.
The crossing, four feet. The crossing, no?
Yeah, the street end and seven.
14?
12, 12.
Oh, I know, please, that.
You can do it?
That I know alley, the third.
Yes, you can.
No.
It's that?
If you're talking about 13, it's 14. 14 is not that, 14 is. It's ours. We haven't done that, that you cut, it's there, we haven't finished until they got out there because of the trucks going in and out. Doesn't have that much asphalt under, so we need to be ready to hold, and so, we're trucking coming in and out there, so now that it's gone, we can go in and finish up. In fact, we're, we're progress, but next week it doesn't right.
Next?
Yeah, sometime next week. It'll probably be the last part of the week.
Now, with that being said, I know that on the north side, on Sioux Road, there's, it's been blocked off for a while already. Through traffic on Sioux Road, what's the status on that?
It's, it's in one that we're talking about that.
Detour, yeah, there's been a detour there.
Yes, sir, we had a construction meeting last week on that. It was updated due to drainage. The estimate at the time was two weeks, so I don't know whether at this point.
Two weeks from the day you made with them?
Yes, yeah, so waiting on that, it's been shut down for a while, but like I said, we, I know the utility issues as well, the Mexico issues that other departments or other, what, areas are pending. You know, the AEPs are one of them, ours, you know, for a while, we have a water team through the actual facility as well for winter, no sense.
Thank you, Juan. And then the last thing, Mayor, as far as the hotel project, and I know I was in here on the board when it was approved. But as far as that project, who's leading that project? Is it the EDC is at the city, and if so, when can we give these residents a workshop?
That's a, that's a joint project, the city and the EDC, and as far as a workshop, it's up to you.
The Commission, we can.
Yes.
Thank you. We can set something up.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Let, I can remember that the people that live in the corner, the cemetery, it's across the corner, the canals. I believe in the back area, there was like an entrance back in the old days that would lead into that cemetery, but whatever reason, I guess, either, I don't know if it was an alley or what it was, but we have a chance by, you see, one of the guys talked to them to see what, if it used to be an alley or it's just something that they, they were going back into the property.
I walked through there, it's pretty much wooded up, woods and grass, but you can see the.
What gets hit?
By the fence line, we got bodies laying across that fence line, so there's some. Whatever, you would, one of them, there, there was.
No, no, there, yes, there's, there's some, yeah.
I get that most, is it the grass, what it has.
Also, on the, on the curves, how are we doing with the grass on the curve?
We're hitting in hard, I mean, there's a lot of pressure that I have, trying every day.
Do you need, do you need more employees, or you need more people to help you?
You know, you.
Well, we had, see, because I was out there. On the weekend. I mean, yeah, I've seen them, they're gaining sound.
They're already sometimes inside of the street, so.
Good, good, good. That's it.
Anything else? Now, we'll go ahead and move on. Go ahead, sir.
Under public hearing orders, Mayor Comisioners, we have a whole public hearing to solicit input from interested parties in cities and one leads under the Urban County Program Fiscal Year 2025-2026. Any action plan?
Let's go, Miss.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a public hearing for the Iguacan County Urban County Program, where all the interested parties can request funds through the CDPG Fund for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Annual Action Plan, a total of $284,266 are available for the City of San Juan for this fiscal year. You have a copy on the packet for, of the public hearing that was on the monitor, this Saturday. And I don't know if you have a copy, receive a letter from Amigos del Valle requesting some funds.
Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:30 PM. Is there anyone here for or against? For or against? Any members of the Commission? Any questions? If not, I'll close this at 6:30 PM. Is there a motion approved? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is a public hearing. Consider honors for men, the appendix, a unified article for Chapter 2, Article 4, Section 2, express record of the district by modifying subsection 11.03. Definition subsection 11.04 zoning use charge to authorize the use of automobile sales quarter of this. Miss?
Yes, this is a public hearing. As you remember, the Express Record District is a zoning that was adopted in February 14, 2017 to redevelop the area of the expressway by allowing some businesses by use or through a conditional use permit. The city has approved some amendments to this Express Record District master plan. And on November 14, 2017, the city approved an amendment to allow car wash facilities. On June 14, 2022, a second amendment was approved to allow only retail along the Express Record District. And now, the San Juan EDC is requesting another amendment to allow car dealerships. Staff present this agenda item to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they approved this amendment with a six zero. And on the first page of the report, you have a copy of the Express Record District, the ordinance, and a table showing which businesses are allowed through a conditional use permit or through, or allowed by use. And this is a public hearing, and now this matter is before you.
This time, I'm gonna open this up at 6:32 PM. Is there anyone here for or against? For or against? Any questions, Members of the Commission? Okay, I'll go ahead and close this at 6:32 PM. Is there a motion approved?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration action on ordinance adopting the school safety ordinance, establishing restrictions of operation of vehicles in the ingress and egress from public and private and private schools, on parking lots and driveways during peak hours of school days, providing for penalties by ordinance in Texas laws, repealing prior ordinances, providing for severity, and ordaining other matters related to the subject hereof. So, Mayor, as you know, this is an item that came before us with the school district, and this is actually for the left turns. It's dangerous as we speak of the school districts that are actually going, for instance, at PSG High School, going westbound. As you make a left turn, people are coming over, going eastbound, so they're asking to block those. As well as the other one that I noticed is like the one in Austin Middle School, they're trying to go in northbound to the left. So what they need to do is they're gonna have to find a way and come back and do it right to be safety.
So this is safety concern?
Yes, ma'am.
So just for the record, this is only from Monday through Friday, am I correct?
Yes.
From 7:30 to 9:00 AM, and then in the afternoon will be from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, right?
It's only peak hours.
Okay, all right. Any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I don't have any questions.
It is a.
No, it's not. It's not a public hearing, right?
It's right.
So is there a motion approved? Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mayor, under appointment, we have considered a move of a missing fore judge. We, we received a, a letter from one of the judges resigning from this position, so Mayor, I don't know if you'd like to consider, uh, going into the site or maybe take no action on it.
Oh, what was that?
This is a regular, remove, resign. For judge.
That's good.
I know that you received it and I.
Yes. Okay, so at this time, we'll just go ahead and take, uh, no action on this matter. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, the next item is consider remove an appointment related to the San Juan EDC board.
Yes, Mayor, at this time, it's a change to, uh, possibly be, I'd like to consider removing Tina Satia and, and, uh, replacing with Mayor Mario Garza, and removing, uh, Ellis Atiyah and replacing with Jeanette Martinez. That's in the motion.
Third, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, sir.
The next item on the discussion of possible action, we have discussion of possible action if any, amend bylaws for the keep San Juan beautiful. Mr. Garza? That keeps San Juan beautiful, uh, bylaws. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So, so I guess, I, I guess just the one thing that I did notice is that you're increasing the, uh, number of board members to fifteen.
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, also, they did, uh, some changes on the bylaws. I have the bylaws offhand, Mr. Hona, get approval, get, get out for legal. Uh, Mr. Hona, would you like to?
Yeah, so, so pretty much, Mayor, it's, uh, increasing from, uh, seven members, if I'm not mistaken, all the way to, uh, fifteen members. Uh, also on item D, ex officio, uh, at the very bottom, they changed, they were added, ex officio must attend all meetings or may send a replacement for him or her. Uh, also under item five, section B, members must attend in next for a minimum of two hours in order to be considered present. And I want to say that's the extent of the changes, so I meant this to the bylaws.
Okay, what was the ex officio comment?
That one says. It's under page seventy-eight. I'm sorry?
No, no, go ahead.
He, he was still under page seventy-eight, which is item four, section D. Uh, it says, uh, shall relate all required business to the city commission, the ex officio must be a current member of the city commission, this member has no voting privileges, nor, nor do they adhere to any other rules of an active member. What was that? It was ex officio must attend all meetings or may send a replacement for him or her. In other words, he, the ex officio.
Okay, I get that, and just for the record.
For example, Mr. San Gado, yes, Mr. Jesse, they can go.
But one thing I just do want to make this clear is that I, I just need to get informed.
Yes, sir.
And, and I don't, and, and please don't tell me from one day to the next.
Oh, sir.
Okay. Once, once we can get that down, then we're good. And you're right, if I can't do all that, that's the, well, then I can. I don't want. Okay, no real problem. Okay, but, but the, the, the main one was that you're increasing the board.
The board member, they, they want to increase it, uh, due to the fact that we, the board is more informed now with the amount of people we have in conjunction with other clubs that are coming together, we're doing a lot more programs. So they want to increase the personnel to go out there and do what we have to do for the year.
Ray, any other questions? No, good. Is there a motion approved?
It's over.
Is your second?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
The next item, item B, discussion possible action if any regarding Texas Fiber LLC.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I don't find.
Yeah, go ahead.
Discussion possible action if any regarding Texas Fiber LLC.
This, this item right here is just one that I requested, and I know that you had mentioned that, uh, we have this fiber company inside the city of San Juan, and, uh, I know that they're working on the north side, am I correct?
Uh, I want to say they, they were working on the north side of the world, right?
Yes, but they're on the north side. Oh, yeah. And so you had mentioned, not in a meeting, but you had mentioned, uh, to me that it was a state. The state is the one who pretty much gave them the green light, am I correct?
So it, it was pretty much something to that. They have a franchise agreement with the state.
Okay, so the, the issue that I have, Mr. Hona, is why wasn't this particular matter brought to the city commission? Uh, and let me tell you why. Um, the reason is because there's been some damage on the north side in reference to this company coming to the city. I know they broke in some shore lines, water lines, uh, they damaged some of our roads. And, uh, those, those were the questions that I would have asked if this item would have been, um, on an agenda. And obviously, if, that I can recall, or maybe I missed the meeting, but I can tell you, I can count how many meetings I missed in one half. Uh, I don't recall seeing anything like this, and, and that was just the reason why I wanted, uh, put this on this, uh, agenda, just for the simple fact that, so that way people know, uh, our, our community knows, our citizens know that, you know, it, it's, it's not really good when you get caught, you know, with your hands down and you don't know what you're explaining. You know what I'm saying? So, um, I guess this is something big. You know, we approve permits, we approve businesses coming in, they come through the P and C. There's a process that goes through the commission. And so I guess the question I have is why wasn't this?
So, so actually, here, when, when we actually found out about this company being here in the city of San Juan, this one, there were some issues with, uh, some property owners. We met with staff and, and actually the, the company and asked them what was going on.
Mm-hmm.
Because obviously, these people are utility companies, they come over on the city rightways, the city easements. Uh, and, and when we talked to them at the time, it was when those persons were being placed up in the front.
Mm-hmm.
And we were from with them, that, that was not gonna be allowed.
Mm-hmm.
So they did say that they were going back, but as far as going back to the question as to why it was not brought up before starting anywhere, we were not aware of that. As to when they came in, it was not until after the fact.
The question, I guess that's, that's the question is, we were not aware of it. I mean, someone coming into your city, we'd have to be aware of it, right?
So actually.
I know there's a law that they passed.
Right.
In defense of, of, of whatever company, right? There's a law that was passed saying that they have the right away and they have the, the, the premium to go in there to certain cities. Why is there a company over another? Is that that certain company got the contracts statewide or?
So we, at, at the time, when, when we spoke to these people, we didn't know who they were. The only thing they did was they came over, got a permit for excavation, but it was not even Texas, NEXUS, and, and states, there are different contractors doing the work. So is that about, uh, who the contractor was, or anything like that? Was the, the people that actually doing the, the excavation, what do we call it?
So contracted.
Is there any permits issued to them?
There's excavation permit and they, they provide their liability insurance, all the information. But then their telecommunication providers, they're exempt from paying the, the excavation fee.
Okay, so let me ask you this. So who's gonna, who's gonna pay for the damages that were done to, to the city?
Maybe they should be paying, they should be paying the damages.
Well.
Obviously, they need to be notified.
Yeah, but, but the point is, Mr. Palasus, is that those are questions that I would have asked before them coming in. Cause I know what, what consists, what kind of work it consists, and I know lines get damaged, you know, water lines. I know our streets get damaged, and so the question is, who, uh, who's gonna pay for that?
Like all the super lines, that maybe they've been hitting through service.
Mm-hmm.
And they get their numbers. And they, they're all, all the services they give, we haven't, we haven't fixed anything.
Okay, so what about the streets? I've seen the ti, I've, I've passed by where they, I've seen the, the type of patches up they do, and you've seen it, you know exactly what I'm talking about. You know what I'm saying? So, but, but the point is, is that this should have been brought to the, the commission, just to, I mean, you know what I'm saying? Ask questions.
Sure.
Cause I knew this was gonna happen. And so you had mentioned about you sitting in or having a meeting with your employees, I mean, I think you should have just brought it up to us and, and informed us of what's going on. You know, cause it's still, you know, uh, people are upset, and I get the state has right away, but does the state have right away in, uh, our residents' homes? And, and I get it if it's along Raúl de Goya, but, but they're, they're going into neighborhoods as well, you know?
So I, I guess if it's on the right aways.
Because they, they, it says state franchise, that's state permit, if state franchise allow them to, to do any work on the utilities, you know, the right ways, whether residential or state highway. It doesn't really specify where they can.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, so what you're explaining to me should have been explained if this item would have been on the agenda before work was done. That's my point. You get what I'm saying? And, and I know you have nothing to do with it, I know, Mr. Hona, he is a city manager. But I, I do have an issue with it, cause like I say, we issue permits for people wanting to sell alcohol at a restaurant, and they go through the process, but this particular big project doesn't go through the commission. That's the issue I have. And I hope that this doesn't happen again, and I'd like to see if we can go out and see what type of damages they've done to our streets. Cause we work so hard, our taxpayers pay so much, okay? They pay so much to get our streets where they should be, and then for a company to come in here and damage? And not only that, but they're gonna be profiting, you know, off, off, uh, this, this, uh, fiber company. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I, I would have easily said, or I would have, I mean, we know legislatures in Austin that we could have addressed them until it would hold down, stop there. Like if someone wants to have, uh, internet, you know? I mean, I, I have to pay spectrum, and they come over and they hook me up. I, I think that's the way it should have been, instead of going out and, and, you know, damaging these roads and, and these properties of our homeowners. So that, that's just the, the reason why I wanted this item on the agenda, just to inform the community that we didn't know anything about. I, I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I'm speaking on my behalf.
Reiter, reiter, what you're saying is that some of these complaints, some of these people are concerned that I didn't even order, or I didn't even ask for this, and all of a sudden they had a box or whatever, and just didn't move it yard. No, no fault to them, or, you know, maybe it was a totally separate company altogether, you know what I'm saying? So I just think it's imperative that the communication there has, has to be, and, and be brought to it, like, like Mayor said, we have to answer to the community. And we have to answer, you know, we're the ones that get the calls, and, uh, we need to be kept abre, uh, abreast of all these things that are happening.
So I guess if we can go out, uh, and assess the damage that, 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 that they've done, Mr. Garza, Mr. Martinez, and, and figure out and see what, uh, the cost is, and get an estimate, and, and maybe build this company for it, cause I can tell you one thing, I don't know if you know this, but city mission submitted a, yeah. And do you know the amount that they submitted?
Uh, I think it's due to over seventy K.
Seventy thousand.
Correct.
Do we do that? Do, do we go and assess the damages?
We can, we can go and assess the damages and make them, uh, fix whatever needs to be fixed.
On our. And, uh, of course, the company is gonna come in, uh, um, but on our end, we can assess what damages.
Right, we can submit receipts. And also include the, the man hours, the hourly? What, how much time you guys are spending on, on that as well, okay? I, I don't know if anybody else has any follow-up, uh, questions or any comments, but, uh, that, that was the main reason. Well, that was the reason why I wanted this particular item on the agenda. Anything? Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes. The next item, the resolution, we have considered some possible actions, the resolution accepting petition for voluntary annexation, setting dates and times of public hearings, and written to planning department to prepare the service plan for the seven point eight acre tract of land out of lab twelve, like twenty-seven out of all the matured company subdivision that requested by OC Development LLC.
Yes, this is a resolution to accept the annexation petition that was made by OC Development LLC to annex seven point eighty-two acre tract of land, located approximately eight quarter of a mile west from Cesar Chavez Road along the south side of Olaker Road. OC Development is working on a sixty-nine residential lot subdivision, and part of the subdivision is outside the city limits, this is why they are requesting, eh, this petition. Eh, by adopting this resolution, city staff can start the, can start the annexation process, public hearings, and sending notices to the different entities in accordance to the Texas Lo, local government code, chapter forty-three, municipal annexation, section forty-three, point CO twenty-eight, and the city charter. Attached to the packet, there is a petition, eh, of annexation, surveys, meets and bounds, eh, for your reference.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Monica?
Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, as time goes on, it shows that we should have approved it.
Yes, I need to, to update.
Does that change the time?
Yes, we need to update the calendar.
I was wondering if we would be looking to make that twenty-third day. That's all I have. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion approved?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under contractual, we consider some action of any authorized American executive renewal of professional service agreement between the city of San Juan and other state agencies. Within the back here of the, the country, Mayor. For three thousand a month.
What's that, Mr.?
The, uh, contracts. Stay the same.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hona?
Mr. Hona, you say it's a letter before and what they, uh, then a fine for, for, for.
Actually. Right, so actually, that, that's what they were working on, they were gonna present at the next meeting at EDC.
So should we hold off on this, or what?
So I'll, I'll get the, uh, report presented to you guys, or have them come over and present to you guys, so at the next meeting, wanna? Yeah, we can, we can take no action.
Take no action, okay, no problem. Thank you. No action. Go ahead, sir.
And then we have, uh, considers an action of any authorized estimate award and enter into contract with the most qualified audit firm for audit services for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, RFP number twenty-five dash zero one. There's ten, there's seventeen audit services.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission, Mr. Hona. On October second, twenty twenty-four, and October ninth, twenty twenty-four, staff solicited proposals in the advance newspaper for RFP number twenty-five dash zero zero one dash one zero dash one seven, Audit Services. On October the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, a bid opening was held, and two proposals were received. One being from Manuel García, García Peña, CPA's out of Westago. The second being from Lawrence J. Beersley, CPA out of Arlington. Mr. Gonzalez, the Director of Finance, reviewed the solicitations, should you have any questions? And staff is recommending awarding RFP number twenty-five dash zero zero one, one zero dash one seven, Audit Services, to the most qualified auditing firm, and authorize the city to enter into an agreement for audit services.
Any questions?
Uh, yes, Leroy, do you have a recommendation on which one you would prefer to vote?
Yes, uh, we've been, uh, we've been working for the past, uh, I believe, six years with Mr. García, García Peña, out of Westco. Uh, he's one of our, uh.
No problem, sir.
No, sir, and he has met the, the March thirty-first deadline, and, uh, we work very, very close together, so.
And all accounts are audited, right? You don't have any outside accounts that are audit city?
All, all of city accounts.
All of, like, our library board parts, how, uh, you know, the future, all of that is part of the.
Is, if they have, um, if it's part of the city, as far as, uh, bank accounts, yes, but if, if it's, they, they won't audit, uh, like, uh, like, uh, what was the one, uh, the PEL? It's not a city, it's not the city, so they won't audit those.
So then who audits the PEL?
I think the, the PEL would have to, uh, get it, get it audited themselves.
That's the only one, pretty much, are you?
Yes.
But as part of the audit, if the city is providing funding, isn't that part of the audit?
No, sir.
No?
No. We, we can, we can request, uh, for them to audit them, but it, it's gonna have to be a separate charge, and I think that's about.
So I'll go, uh, get, uh, with the board and see what we need to do, whatever, if, if there's such, you know, we need to do them, go ahead and do it. You know, if we need, if we need it, we'll see what the, the, the flaws and everything, they would move it, and if there's such a, a need, then, no problem.
So if you need additional assistance from the city?
That is true.
Yeah, so that, we can help you guys out, you guys are doing a, you're doing a good job on that program.
Yeah, we do have. Yeah, we do have, we do have, uh, uh, accounting that looks at her.
Sure, no problem, okay.
Lubin, now, that one falls under just the P A W, right? You you separate it.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a five oh one C.
So why do we use, uh, police for that repeat?
For what?
Is it part of the police also or not? With chief?
No, it's it's only independent.
It's a five oh one C.
Yeah.
It's police athletically, so. So the purpose of it, having their own P A W, cause in case Chief Sequentes is generous and wants to give us a million dollars, we can take from the forfeiture funds, we can use it for P A W, am I correct? I mean, we can use some of it. So.
Okay.
Alright, we're good. Well, with that being said, natural recommendations, sir.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Is there a motion approved?
Was it approved as recommended?
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Under consent agenda, today we have item A, B, and C. Uh, those are going to be pulled and modified, discussed, further discussion on those, mayor, and just approve that.
Okay, yes, thank you, sir. At this time, is there, uh, anything we need to amend or modify under consent agenda? Amend or modify?
Yes, mayor, I mean.
Go ahead, sir.
The consent agenda would include a minute, correct?
Yes.
On a minutes, Mister Brenda. Page seven. For the motion was made to this panel. And and it was four to one, but it was commissioners on the end that voted against the commission.
So what was, what was the, what was the final? It was, it was four one, but it was a wrong commission, that was. Oh, okay, got it.
And then under the budget report, uh, uh, here were page three of page four sixty-nine. There's, there's, uh, administration miscellaneous. Um, it says that it's almost five hundred percent over the budget, one hundred seventy-four thousand, and, uh, and financials, and C four, what, what, what is that?
Uh, it has the, uh, hotel. And it had also had, uh, the fire truck, which we're gonna get reimbursed by.
Okay, so that was the purchase of the hotel and the fire. Oh. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Those modifications, is there a motion approved?
No, move.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Under executive session, my commission, we have considered it convenient executive session according to the index of the municipal sector, and the stations in force, and in the, um, chapter five five one seven one. Tonight, we have the pursuit of section five five one seven one, according to the attorney, of Texas government code, discussion of possible action regarding new issues concerning attitude for twenty-four, twenty-five. Also, under the same code, is a possible action regarding new issues concerning the emergency. And pursuit of section five five one seven one, uh, to come to the attorney, in discussion of possible action regarding new issues concerning stabbing plus classification.
With that being said, uh, is there a motion to enter executive session? Second, all those in favor say aye. Will be entered at six fifty-seven P M. We're back from executive session, item one. Is there a motion to review? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Under executive session, eight one. Uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion as discussed in executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, under executive session, eight two. Uh, no action, am I correct? El de lo matos? No, no. Okay, and under eight three, I'll go ahead and, uh, no action at this time as well. With that being said, is there a motion adjourned? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting has been adjourned at eight oh two P M. Thank you.